Can I please start the end of the hearing? Uh, this is the subject of SAG, Publicity and Public Mission. For the time of the day, uh, to to approve the minutes from our office meeting, uh, several of the things that were discussed, you know, in the comments or in the notes.
I move to approve the minutes from the office.
Second.
Fall for favor in the second half.
Aha.
You have followed. Okay. Now, I would want to, for the time, uh, and catch my eye, if there's any way that we can see this public area to sort of approve or wait up. Smith, Smith, and Popovich, who are home to retail, to retail, what is this, what is this? Chris, for the, uh, and Ted, it's probably, uh, thirty-four minutes before.
Thank you. The site is owned by Currie, designated office, and is occupied by commercial development. Land use in the area consists of commercial retail development to the east and south, residential development to the north. The applicant is Musa Jack, an L T D owner and L C A agent, and the purpose of the replat request from office to retail is to provide a wider range of development options for the site. Using the city's identified priorities contained in the city of Odessa's comprehensive plan to allow zoning amendments that follow and come after offer. Comprehensiveness, the proposed replat request is not contrary to the established land uses in the general area or the land use plan of the city of Odessa's master plan, and an extension of existing retail zoning of properties south of the site. Reasonability, the proposed zoning would not have a negative impact on the site or surrounding properties. The proposed retail development is not out of line with existing retail use development in the area. Reasonableness, the proposed zoning district will be encircled by existing office and retail development, as well as single-family and multi-family development. It will facilitate a reasonable transition between land uses of varying intensities, varying intensities, varying intensities, and will not create a conflict with existing land uses in the area. Based upon the proceeding announced, this staff recommends a pool of other requests. Any questions?
Is there any question for staff? And, uh, I would like to sit in the, um, here, and if there's anyone that wishes to speak in favor or not, uh, to the smell of me to come over there now and hold them, that gives a man to the back to the left. Is there anyone in favor of, is there, which is speaking now? Uh, seeing whether there is or not, a couple of questions in terms of, second to the study, uh, uh.
I move for approval, case file number twenty-two-one dash thirteen dash Z is presented.
Okay, I'm at the fifteen percent. Okay, there. I'm motion second, I'll favor it, and say aye.
Aha.
Thank you, Paul, in the center. Okay, we, uh, think, uh, this is, uh, being, just public area to sort of approve or vision, uh, being used as one of the, uh, wanting to reduce, uh, you know, probably, uh, like, six to seven hours, and can I just, uh, get, get through it, and so, we're probably, uh, in the middle, see the best, but I can, locate this, uh, higher, drive, mission drive.
Thank you. The property involved in this replat request is located east of the intersection of San Pedro Drive and Mission Drive. The site is owned special dwelling district, approximately two point five acres, and is vacant. Land use in the area consists of residential development to the north and west, and vacant land to the east and south. The applicant is Musa Jack, an L T D owner and L C A agent, and the purpose of the replat is to create non-lots for residential development. We did receive, we sent out thirty-one notices and received back no, uh, un, none were, uh, sent back, but we did receive three written protests. They didn't make it onto the PowerPoint. Apologize for that. Commission actions required on the following items, a mission estate's file filing exists in the name of this replat may need to be changed. It is being proposed as, uh, mission estate thirteen filings, so that item is taken care of. A street date is needed for the proposed right-of-way noted in the replat. They need to add note to the plat that no direct access to mission drive is allowed on lots twenty-nine and thirty-seven. And that a drainage easement needs to be added, uh, the south end of the cul-de-sac, per public works. With that, if there are any questions from the commission?
Is there any question, any questions, except? Like that, you, again, if there's anything to the top here, uh, just the, uh, after, uh, after, uh, seven hundred, if, if I was all you want?
Yes.
Because, uh, uh, so, again, uh, this is, I thought I'd hear, and then, you know, there was, did you say, uh, they, this man, uh, over time, uh, who was, uh?
Yeah, my name's Anthony Eldridge, I live at thirty-one twenty-four San Pedro Drive, that's lot one, Anthony. Thirty-one twenty-four San Pedro Drive, right on the corner of that lot. Can I give, perfect, uh, everything that was approved just to the west that she just explained was approved in the last year and a half as well. These people had tore up my property once before, tore up my sprinkler system as well. It created a huge amount of noise in the backdrop, I picked up multiple, multiple back trash off my property. Um, and that's all just from the structure of the room alone. There's an extreme amount of noise now right behind my house, what used to be secure, why we chose that property to begin with in our purchase when we were homeschooling children. And now there's a race, you know, race engines on the backside of that property all the time. Just an increased amount of traffic, um, with the way they built that new subdivision to the right of us, and now with this one coming in the south, which is extremely concerned with another increased activity, they are picking up more trash. And who knows what kind of, uh, noise coming from these properties in the future as well. We are requesting that the builders actually rebuild our fence into some type of noise barrier fence or stuff or something of that nature, and get us away from this type of noise that they have implemented into our property. Thank you. Thank you.
My name's David Henderson, thirty-one twelve San Pedro Drive, on that little plaque there, I'm number four, that backs up to this property here. If you're looking at the design, I think y'all did a great job in requiring the developers across the street to provide an alley. I mean, it's a Jim Dandy alley, it's paved, and a lot of those people have access to their houses from behind. In this case, in the drawing here, we see no provision, in fact, my, my property fence would back up to that. I'd be forced to share a fence, which, of course, you don't know what your promise, we built there, they said they're never gonna develop anything back there. We chose that over, you know, another area there. So, uh, we'd at least ask you to consider, uh, that you ask the developer to do what they've done after, always put a nice alley in there, a barrier between those families and ours. Uh, also, just as a series, it's vacant here, uh, but, uh, the developers there have built a number, I'd say seventy-five percent of those homes are all two-story houses. Now, I've already got a feeling in the privacy invasion, just from across that street, even our backyard, across some of the balconies and windows that are there. We'd ask you if this is developed and approved, if you restrict them to single-story houses, so that we don't have somebody just right behind us, appearing over in our backyard, privacy issue. Uh, two-story houses, I think that's it. Uh, one thing that concerns me, it came up, the homeowners association offered, give this property, buy the property, give it to the city for a part years ago. And they came back to the lawyers for the city, or your group, whoever said, no, this is not appropriate for public safety. Just south of this area, I think it's a runoff, or, you know, something that's available, uh, I'm not sure the purpose is there. But I'm concerned with the kids, you know, could be playing out there in the ground or something, you don't want that to happen. So, I'm just asking the question, why was it not say, you know, that's all they have, have a public safety here, but it's okay now to put residents in there, to pay kids, come outside their fences and be exposed to the same thing. And I say, you're the zoning committee, look at all the households in this area, there's no park in that area, I think that's a great idea. Go back to the developers, say the city is willing to do this, I think the homeowners association would like to talk to you about it. Put a playground there, you know, the Bankhead Highway there, it'd be a great historical thing, make a runoff area, a pond. Have D T D B's engineering guys to develop something there. Anyway, some, I think there's a better idea. Please table this motion, look at all the comments here, come back with a better plan. Thank you very much. Any questions from you? Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity, my name is Stephen Sanchez, I live at, uh, three-one-zero-four San Pedro. Uh, much like my neighbors, I have the same concern, the reason we chose this neighborhood was because there wasn't, because we had that privacy. Uh, now, with the way it's zoned and, and, and scheduled to go, um, sharing a fence, I've got relatives who live in parts that share fence with their neighbors. Again, a two-story neighbor, uh, a constant issue they have is the windows open and children look right back in the backyard, I mean, it's, it's, our, our privacy is going to be compromised, it's going to be taken from us, which again, why we lose this beautiful neighborhood, we take pride in where we live and make sure that it's, it's a great neighborhood, and now we're looking at the prospect of having a neighborhood right on us. There are plenty of neighborhoods that are like this, that houses right next to each other, above each other, this isn't what, um, I guess I bargained for when I got into this, you know, this neighborhood. I mean, I, I understand that, you know, you know, there needs to be more housing, uh, however, we would ask again that at least an alley, some kind of ease, some, some, some sort of separation between properties, and then again, that two-story homes aren't, um, maybe built on the, on that side, because you can see firsthand what happens. Um, you, 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 you lose the basic access and privacy to your backyard when you have your neighbor literally feed away from you being in the backyard, so. Um, I think that's the main topic points that we have to be, or, you know, I think something that would give us, that would guarantee us, uh, the value of our property, um, again, to be able to secure the value of our property, not, you know, in future, in future, or in future instances, someone may not want to buy that, because of, you know, as soon as they walk in the backyard, they see your neighbor can look right down at you, you know, I don't have a door anywhere, but you, you just never know. And again, we decide that you should take that into consideration, as, as you look, you know, as you approve or, or unapprove this, um, that you take into account, those neighbors or, or those people in the mission who are going to be affected directly by this. I got it, thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Matt Lippman, and I live at twenty-one Augustine Court. I'm the president of the board of directors of the Mission State Properties Owners Association, and I just wanted to speak in support of our homeowners. Uh, and I would echo what's been said, that if there was a way to have a setback or an alley behind our property owner's senses, uh, that would be greatly appreciated. Um, any kind of limitations to single-story homes would be appreciated. Beyond that, we would also absolutely support the idea of a, a park in the area. We've got some other issues, or ideas around that as well, that I'd love to bring forward at another time, but, uh, that's really all I've got, but, but again, we, we echo everything that's, uh, been said already and support our homeowners. Thank you. Thank you.
David Henderson, thirty-one twelve San Pedro Drive. Also, we've seen, and I know in Midland, if there are two-story houses built there, uh, that they're limited to where they don't have windows or balconies or something where they could look at it. I know there was an apartment in Midland that had to rebuild because they were looking over into neighboring, again, for the privacy. And I'm concerned, because I know my wife had mailed in a car, and I was surprised that there were no cars. Y'all, double check the lane. Thank you. Okay.
Just to address that, we did receive the three, part of them they were distributed to the, they just didn't make it onto the presentation. Okay.
So, uh, we are, we are, uh, the things that you did to, uh, all of us, more working on, uh, need to be considered, probably, you know, there's a little, like, this commission can, can consider. Uh, this, we're, we're planning to know, but this is the thing, you have to have a zone, you should, and I would know that, that in the presentation, this site, uh, zone, uh, dwelling district, and all the stuff, talking about, they have more relations or, before, uh, the high, uh, installation, we can, uh, 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 we wouldn't do that, if there were to be movement, to do a lot of that, and have, uh, construction, uh, have, have it out, we have, uh, what's that, that, in, in, that, that, uh, that, uh, if you can, if I'm, if I'm, uh?
Just to echo what you said, uh, that is correct, right now, you are just looking at the flat, uh, the, and you might be able to correct me if I'm wrong, the, the, uh, special dwelling district would require a site plan. The site plan would be an opportunity to address some of the issues regarding any type of building setbacks and building, um, building type requirements, thank you. Uh, the alleys are not required, um, as you stated. But the, some of the issues could be addressed at the site plan, uh, phase of development. And if the applicant, that would be, uh, up to the developer? The applicant, I'm sorry, did they say they were here? Can you ask for the representative?
John Langrath, five-twenty-one North Texas Avenue, Odessa. Oh, yes, we will submit the site plan, um, just in the near future, we've got engineering plans that need to be approved in the normal process of going through that. Uh, this, if you go back to the plat, I think you can see that, yeah, these lots are comparable to the neighbors' lots, I mean, they're essentially the same size lots and planning the same type of, uh, development, Mr. Lewis, so, we'll be selling these to, uh, individual builders.
John, is this the first subdivision out here that has gone without the alleys?
No, uh, in fact, I've, I've been criticized for this, but the original country, Mission Country Club, all the lots backing up to the golf course and everything had no, no alleys, and then there's several other since that time that have no alleys. Mr. Green's, uh, subdivision doesn't have alleys, and so there's, there's several others that do not.
But these are the, I think these are the first ones that, that back up to each other that have no, these, these are the first ones that back up to each other that don't have an alley, where the, where the houses are pancake next to each other, these are the first ones that are like that, correct? The ones you're talking about back up to a golf course.
Some, some do, and, and some of, of Mr. Green's do not, and then, uh, John Green's subdivision, and then there's another, gosh, I can't remember the name, like, Gary Ken, uh.
Mission Green's, it, the, the ones that I recall out there, those actually don't back up to each other's houses, those have, those back up to, to, uh, to the street.
On the west side, they back up to houses.
There's, there's an alley on those.
Is there an alley there?
There's an alley there, there's an alley on those. The other ones actually back up to a street.
Yeah, the other ones do back up to, the street.
To a street, and the, and the, and the other ones back up next to a golf course, this is the only one that I can recall that back pancake, no, to each other house, to a house, so.
Uh, there were, tell me about, uh, property sale, it's, uh, possible, water, uh, uh, no, the bridge requires, uh, the, uh, south, uh,
Only Mr. Coker addressed that, I think, they, they understand this.
It is a city-owned and it's designated as a detention base. That's why we asked for the ease of making the agreement, considering grains from this subdivision coming south. And, uh, yes, yes. That'll be, that'll be addressed to Mr. Green's grain report, he'll calculate that number, it'll be the development requirement. Yes.
I'd like to know what's proposed on the, I guess it's the, on the east side, is that going to be a street on the next development? We know that, yeah. We don't know what, is that, is that property just new, is that, is that a developed piece of property? Does it appear to be from the, any incomferences that's going to prevent that from being developed? Do we?
Yes.
Where the trees are? Are you going to, are you going to present it?
Yes, I'm talking about that portion, yes. Who developed this parcel, just the western guys, is that Musa's doing? Who's just west of y'all, your houses, your, your, who developed that? Musa? Was Musa's?
I'm just a little concerned, the only thing I'm concerned about here. These houses have been built all over town without alleys. I'm not a big fan of no alleys, but that's the way the city is heading in, and that development is moving in that direction full speed. And that's, we decided to go that route. The only concern I have here is that alleys were developed by Musa on all these others. And these, these houses were built along this west edge of Musa's previous development. All the others had alleys, correct? In that subdivision? And I am a little concerned that all of a sudden, on his next development, to back up these houses, there are no alleys. I'll be honest with you on that, because it is, is.
Well, that's unfortunate, and it's also unfortunate that somebody misinformed them, because unless a, a property is owned by an entity that can definitively tell you, no, I'm not going to build that there. The city can own something and have plans for a park and have plans for this, that, the other, or a binding, um, line and deed that would tell you for certain what would, that would not be built on a property. If it belongs to a private person, they really don't even have to tell you what they're going to do.
Oh, I agree with you, I agree with you. It's, it's the next development that did the valleys behind their subdivision, because the city has changed what they wanted, the direction they wanted to go, and let these people in that situation now. We could approve alleys down there and say, oh, future, actually, I was asking what's going to be on the, on the west side, is this going to be a street over here, then you terminated everybody that had a concern there. Now, and it's shifted a little bit in mid-straight, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, it affects the fabric of the neighborhood, um, again, back to, that's the desires and needs of the private, uh, property owner. And, uh, with the board being directed to, you have to follow within the guidelines that are set by the city. So, while there would be an amenity, it would, uh, they're not required.
I understand. I understand, if that had been a street there, and we started across the street, and we did it, but we backed up to them and just set these new guidelines, and that's a little, that's a little bit of a bait and switch, okay, just a little bit.
My question is, can the, can the city, planning and the developers and the citizens come up to a compromise where they can take care of the privacy and the privacy, is that something that can be worked out? Or, or is this a challenge that's likely to be developed?
May I address again? Uh, I hear y'all maybe some, I don't know if it's for, or majority leaning towards requesting alleys. I would ask you just to table this and let Mr. Musa have some input in, because there's a big economic develop difference. If I put alleys in, one, the cost of alleys, reduce the size of lots, but, but I have to have twice as many utilities potentially, putting them in the alley as opposed to being in the street. And, and I don't know what his, you know, who his market might be on those lots, but.
Is something he could look at though?
Yep, yep.
Don't deny or request anything, table it if you're not going to approve it. Please. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
But tabling it could give the homeowners association an opportunity to present the idea of converting that to park. I don't know what the value of that lends to the property owner, but tabling it, if there was.
I don't know what the tabling is.
Uh, I've done it for three days.
Yeah, I, I think he bought it from.
Oh.
The property involved in this replat request is located east of the intersection of North Texas Avenue and East Sixth Street. The site is zone Central Business District, District One, and Central Business District Two, approximately, approximately one point two acres. It is a parking lot. Land use in the area consists of a hotel, office, commercial uses, and a church. The applicant is Prosperity Bank owner and L C A agent. The purpose of the replat is to create one lot for the development of a new Prosperity Bank facility with parking and driveway lanes. Commission action is requested on the following items, that they correct Jackson Avenue to North Jackson Avenue per planning and Ectra County nine one one. Alley event needs to be completed prior to the plat per planning and public works. The addition of a utility easement to the plat per public works, and they add a twenty-foot cutback dedication at the two-street intersections per public works. With that, does the commission have any questions?
I move to approve case file number twenty twenty-one dash five O dash P.
The property involved in this replat request is located north of the intersection of North Flodry Road and State Highway one ninety-one. The site is zone retail one and is undeveloped. Land use in the area consists of commercial development and vacant land. The applicant is Wiley Brown and Fredna Family Partnership L T E, owner and L C A agent. The purpose of the preliminary plat is to create one lot and provide road easements for future retail development. Commission action is requested on the following items. We need to add a note to the plat that no direct access to Flodry from Lot one, Lot two is allowed for public works. Propose one ninety-one spacing is acceptable for Lion Gate access and a note to be added to state, no additional driveway will be allowed between Flodry Road and Lion Gate access, per public works and Texas. Shiloh Market Street is similar in age to Shiloh Road in the city of Odessa per Ectra County nine one one, and would need to be changed as to avoid any confusion. Shiloh's where second filing will have one G P S point per G I S, two are required. Uh, C R M W D has a thirty-three inch pipeline running through the lawn and along portions of this addition. Prior to finalizing the plat, the location of this line shall be determined. And if needed, the existing C R M W D easement shall be adjusted to the new plat so that the existing pipelines are within the easements, C R M W D, or C R M W D. With that, I can answer any questions for the commission?
Will this face like fifty-sixth street, or will it face like, um, one ninety-one, when this is developed?
So, if you look upon, uh, the, the plat, here, up here is the proposed fifty-sixth street.
Okay.
And, uh, here is the Shiloh Market Street.
Okay.
With the one lot that's being proposed in this filing, Shiloh, and here's Flodry, uh, to, to the west.
I can answer that a little too. I'm, I'm privy to the site plan, I'm not privy to tell you who that is yet, but, uh, it's a national, international restaurant that you'll recognize. Uh, the building will face fifty-sixth street, but it'll obviously have a drive, circle drive-through, and will be able to access to the south or to the north, and nothing to Flodry Road.
I read way too much into your question. Okay, awesome.
Any other questions at that?
I move to approve case file number twenty twenty-one dash fifty-one dash P.
Thank you, the site is within the city of Odessa, extraterritorial jurisdiction, does not have a zoning designation in this current neighborhood. The applicant is a long age, so is they owner, SWL health consultant. And the purpose of the plat is to create two lots of approximately, uh, point fifty-eight grand for ownership purposes. Comments were sent to a consultant for review on August twenty-fourth, and I'm here for your questions. Thank you. The property involved in this request is located southwest of the intersection of Beatty Road and most proposed, and proposed area. Approximately forty, forty-six by twenty-six acres. It's zone special dwelling district and is vacant land for you. Land use in the surrounding area consists of single-family residential development to the west, and single-family residential vacant land to the south, and vacant land to the north and east. The applicant is Dr. Ward, owner, and the purpose of the request is to facilitate development of nine, one thousand nine hundred fifty, uh, single-family residential lots, averaging approximately in size of seven, seven thousand five hundred square feet, and for, this is for ownership purposes. Um, the planning and zoning commission gave her the preliminary approval of home state parks for filing on February first, twenty eighteen, with the following conditions, which have already been met. Um, the conditions have been met, and fireflies are approved for commissioning.
I move to approve case file number twenty eighteen dash zero one dash P.
Certainly.
The property involved in this request is located northwest of the intersection of North Milky Way Avenue and West Forty-second Street. The site is located outside of the city limits and in the city of Odessa's extraterritorial jurisdiction. It is vacant. The applicant is O B V C Ranch Corporation owner, SWL. Consultant, and the purpose of the plat is to create thirteen lots for ownership purposes. The planning and zoning commission gave preliminary plat approval on May twentieth, twenty twenty-one, with the following conditions which have since been met. And the final plat is ready for commission approval. No further notices, this is per plan. Thank you.